One of the earlier meetings, you had suggested that they change the siding so that it doesn't look so institutional. They dropped that idea, I guess. I've never seen them address it. I don't know if you want to bring it up again or what.
I didn't see.
I didn't see.
I didn't see any fight.
Two people that.
Yeah, I know Mark is not. Going out.
Yeah, and Gary.
I will know.
Can you hear me again?
Something remotely. No, Grant, no stenographer tonight.
What happened?
No stenographer. No stenographer.
No. No Mark. No Gary. And I don't know where Sue or. I don't know if they're coming.
Brent went home sick. I just talked to him. Who was on tip? Brent.
Oh. So he must be home. Controlling that. He's probably controlling that remotely.
I don't know how to. Ralph, can you hear us, Ralph? Yeah, Ralph, just make sure that this is recording, please. There's no response now. Maybe you took about. Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of North Providence Planning Board hearing located at 2000 Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. Today is July 9th. Time is 6:10 PM. Will you please join me in saying our country's Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you for joining. So we're going to begin tonight's hearing with taking attendance via roll call.
Lou DeLucaio.
Warren Richatelli.
David Parenti, Chair.
Angelica Bovas, Solicitor.
Steve Petasi.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. If you have been here before, you'll notice that we do not have our stenographer with us tonight. We are recording this meeting for public, for record. And our town planner is absent due to illness. We do have a quorum tonight. And first on tonight's agenda is the approval of meeting minutes from May 14th, 2025. May 21st, 2025, and June 11th, 2025. And we'll tackle each meeting minutes individually. I trust that everybody on the board has had a chance to review the meeting minutes. May 14th, 21st, and 11th. Do I hear a motion regarding the meeting minutes of May 14th?
Still moved.
Is that to approve?
To approve.
To approve. All right, motion to approve meeting minutes dated May 14th is on table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hey Lou, seconds. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Okay. Next up is approval of meeting minutes dated May 21st, 2025. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make your motion for approving.
Warren Richatelli makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Steve Petasi, second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay. And lastly, we have meeting minutes from June 11th, 2025. Do I hear an approval to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Lou makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Steve makes a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Okay, next on today's agenda is the address of 114 Baird Avenue, Assessors Platt Lot, Platt 24A, Lot 110, Zone Residential Limited, 10 RL 10. The applicant is Patriot Builders, 14010 Road Exeter, Rhode Island. The description is a continuance of the public hearing continued from February 2nd, I'm sorry, 12th to 2025. The application is for master plan review for an adaptive reuse development converting the existing two structures into 48 residential units, meeting the maximum number of units per acre permitted by right for an adaptive reuse project under Section 203 District Use Regulations of the zoning ordinance. We are going to take this project first as a lot of information that the board requested of the applicant was received very punctual today. I myself haven't had a chance to dive into the information, and I believe the applicant is still in process of obtaining some of the information that the board had requested our last hearing. Is. Well, state your name, I'm sorry.
Jack McGreen for the applicant. So I did have discussion with the planning board, and I guess it is 416 pages. It's not 600. So I know that Phase 1 environmental that we just, we just received. We weren't sure. I didn't think we were going to have it for the meeting, but we, but we did receive it. And so I understand that you want an opportunity to be able to read through that to probably be able to ask. And some other board members on here that would like probably to ask some questions about it as well. So rather than rehashing the thing twice, my client's willing to continue the matter to give you time to look at it. And the other thing I did mention was that we have one of the two sewer letters from there against the Bay Sewer Commission. We still do not have the other one for the larger building. They went out there. They had to locate the pipes. They did that. They ran some cameras, not to bore you with the details. We have one of the two. So I know our position again was that we're going to think we needed that for master plan approval, but we may be able to get it. So I figured as long as we're continuing on this matter, let's continue it and hopefully we'll have that other one by the time we meet again.
Thank you. So the applicant does agree to continue the, the public hearing to.
Next, what's the next meeting?
It would be the second Wednesday in August.
That's the 13th.
Which is August 13th. Correct. Correct. So we can have a motion from the board to continue unless anybody feels otherwise or has had the appropriate amount of time to review all the information that we recently received today. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the project. Again, I'll make a, I'll entertain a motion to continue the project based on the extreme amount of information that the board recently received, given the fact that I know myself haven't personally haven't had any time to review the information to have an appropriate level of conversation and discussion with the applicant or my fellow board members. I myself do not feel comfortable being presented or hearing the information tonight or rendering an opinion. Do I hear a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue.
Steve makes the motion to continue. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Warren, seconds. We will take a roll for, roll, vote for this. Starting with Lou.
Aye.
Warren. Aye, Chair.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. The project is continued to the second week of second Wednesday of August, August 13th, 2025. Thank you for the applicant for providing the extreme amount of information that this board has requested. And we encourage your efforts to continue to give that information for us in our review of the project. I do want to thank everybody if you did come out tonight to hear this project in particular. I thank you for your time and your patience with us. The board did receive an extreme amount of information today. I think every, I speak for the board when I say that the board takes this project very seriously, and we do want to give ourselves the time to review the information that is being presented to us so we can make the best informed decision possible for the town. Thank you. Is anybody else in the gallery having issues hearing me? Can every, that's not the, I'm sorry, sir. That's not the question I asked. I asked if everybody in the gallery can hear me, yes or no? Is now better to, thank you. So as I said, the board recently, recently received an extreme amount of information from the applicant regarding the project on Baird Avenue today. This is information that we had asked the applicant to provide our last public hearing. The information is a lie. Me, myself, and my fellow board members who just voted to continue the project have had, has, we have had not enough time to review the information properly to enter into a discussion or to even hear the project. We are, we, if we did hear that project tonight, I would say that we were putting the town at risk in making a decision based on information that we have not had enough time to understand. And this board treats every project that we hear responsibly in a manner that we see best fit for the town, and we do not want to rush a decision based on information that we received literally hours ago. And there is nothing in the state law that prevents the applicant from submitting this information in the time that they did. I can be frustrated, which I am. However, I hope that my behavior towards the public right now is responsible and polite enough where you feel respected. And I respect your time for coming out here tonight, and I can understand your frustrations. I share them. But I am not at a point where I can hear that project tonight, given the fact that we've received a lot of information in a short amount of time. August 13th. During that, during that meeting, the board will make an informed decision on whether or not to listen, hear the project, and we will go into a discussion with whether or not we feel is time appropriate to vote on that project. And I am not addressing, I'm not addressing the public anymore tonight about Baird Avenue. Next on the agenda is item number three. The address is Zero Mineral Spring Avenue, Assessors Platt Lot, Platt 19, lots 12, 40, 41, and 42, Zone Commercial General CG. The applicant is David Grandy, 2 Jason Drive, Lincoln, Rhode Island. The description is a public hearing. The applicant is applying for a unified development plan review for master plan review to construct a Take 5 auto repair, oil change facility with request for a 12 space parking variance under section 710 minimum off-street parking requirements, as well as a loading space variance under section 713 load space requirements and dimensions. This application also has a request to combine master plan and preliminary plan stages of review. Can you please state your name and?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Mancini on behalf of the applicant and the owner this evening with regards to the property identified as Platt 19, lots 12, 40, 41, and 42. The petition before you is a major land development project. And we are asking as part of our relief that the master plan review and the preliminary plan review be combined. We're also asking for uniform development review as part of the application is also a variance for two specific provisions as provided, as stated by your chairman. One is a variance for minimum Wall Street parking, and the second is a variance for loading space. The, I have with me tonight Josh Klein from Stonefield Engineering, who will go through the details of the project and the proposed site plan and the development of the parcel. The, the goal here is to develop this parcel for purpose of constructing what's called a Take 5. Take 5 is a oil change facility. It is not a, it's new to Rhode Island, but not new overall. It operates in 10 different states, has 41 facilities. This would be the second facility in the state of Rhode Island. Our first one was recently approved in Johnston. So we're hoping that perhaps although Johnston was the first one to approve it, North Providence could be the first one to have a grand opening for, for Take 5. The, the idea here is that this facility would be kind of a valet service. The customers never leave their car. They essentially come to the site. They're greeted by an employee who does a take, intake, and then queues them into the appropriate garage for purposes of their oil change. The only services that are provided at this facility would be oil change, fluid change, and windshield wiper change. There are no auto repairs that are being proposed here. Nor will they be done here. And as I indicated, the technician slash employee would take the intake, address the customers, and then proceed them through the process. And our, our design addresses both parking and also addresses the queuing and site layout. We are asking for combined preliminary, preliminary and, and master plan because we pretty much essentially have the entire site engineered and prepared. We did make our submission to Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. We also made our submission to Rhode Island Department of Transportation. We're waiting for their approvals. DM has already provided us with their initial comments, all of which were positive in minor in nature. So we believe that that approval would be forthcoming. So essentially, we're asking the board to allow us to combine those review stages and allow us to proceed subject to ultimately receiving the state agency approval from RIDOT and, and DEM. As far as hours of operation, the, this facility would be open seven days a week, and the hours are essentially 7:00. And the hours are essentially uh seven AM to eight PM. Uh and again, our our peak times would be between the hours of three and six, uh and sometimes in the morning between. Uh between eight eight and ten. I I do have representatives from the company here if there are any specific questions about the company or its operation. Uh um other than that, I I think it makes sense for us to hear from Mr. Klein from Stonefield Engineering. He can uh address both the variants, uh the two variants that we're requesting and specifically go through the site plan. Uh in our in our design and ultimately improvement for the site. So with that, I'll I'll ask Mr. Good.
No, thank you for that introduction. I do have two questions. Um yeah, where where did you say you stood you stood with um? The DEM permit and submission?
But both DEM and DOT have been submitted. Uh D oh um DEM has provided us their comments. Uh initial comments. Those comments were not substantial, so we don't uh we don't believe it'll take any time for us to respond to them and ultimately receive their approval.
Are those comments um in the package?
Um no, you probably don't have the comments as of yet. Yeah, they came in today.
Okay. Would the applicant be amenable to submitting those comments?
Absolutely, yeah. We've and we've been we've been working with the town planner uh continuously, so we have no problem in submitting those comments and keeping the town planner. Uh informed as to how we proceed.
Okay, thank you. And then how about DOT?
Uh DOT DOT is we haven't received any comments back from DOT, but the application has been made to DOT. We don't think that there would be uh any significant comments because we're not changing the curb cut. It's uh this property is served by an existing curb cut. Uh and the use, the the reason for the PAP permit, physical alteration permit, is because of the change in use on the site. But given our submission DOT, given our design, we think that uh that the uh PAPA permit should be forthcoming.
Okay, and what was the purpose of the DEM submission?
Uh DEM is stormwater.
Okay, that was it?
Yeah.
Okay, the um.
And I'll have and um you know, Josh can can go through the site on that more specifically with you.
Okay, do you know DEM comments on or um regulates the storage or um of any oil or discharge of oil for the?
They 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 do not. So DEM does have an underground storage uh tank requirement. So any anything that would be stored underground. Would be would require DEM approval and review. That's not being that's not what takes place here at all. So there is nothing that's stored underground. Uh anything that is stored is above ground and and wouldn't implicate any type of DEM requirements or regulations.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Josh.
Can you state your name and credentials for the record, please? Thank you.
Uh Josh Klein, Stonefield Engineering and Design, uh fifty-six Pine Street, Providence, Rhode Island. Um I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island as well as about ten other states. Um I may have probably presented in front of around sixty to seventy. Um boards in the northeast in the last two years as a expert in site civil as well as traffic engineering.
And you are sir, you are a registered licensed civil engineer in Rhode in the state of Rhode Island?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, well, I can um kinda jump into a little bit. I think Mr. Mancini did a nice job giving it giving an overview. I did hand out um a colorized exhibit. It's just it's the same site plan. Um the same site plan that was submitted, the same landscape that was submitted. We just combined them together and colorized it, make it easy a little easier to talk through uh this evening. Um I'm just kinda pointing to the cover sheet first. There's not too many people here from the public, but on the cover sheet, we have the aerial exhibit. I'm sure the board's familiar with the location. Um kinda was two existing buildings that were previously demolished. Um site sat vacant. Looks like it was kinda stabilized and filled, um but it's kinda currently underutilized or under underdeveloped. Um it's about a half an acre, point four five four acres. I think kinda two of the big keys with the site as we get into kinda site design and engineering is grade change. There's about a seventeen to eighteen foot grade change. From the top left corner down to the bottom right corner, kind of the north. Um northwest to northeast. There's a ten-foot grade change along Mineral Spring, uh which makes it really challenging. There's two existing retaining walls. There's one. They're kind of interconnected, but one along Mineral Springs and it wraps around on Malcolm Street on the right-hand side. Other u- unique feature is we have three frontages. We have Mineral Springs, DOT jurisdiction at the top of the page. Malcolm Street on the right-hand side or to the east, um and then Merrimack Street uh to the south. Um. We are in the the commercial general district. It is a permitted use, so. Um as noted, kind of a four is this is just kind of a a quick loop or an oil change facility. So no kind of. No auto repairs or not. We're not kind of replacing brakes or fixing things. You know, this is you kinda come in, kinda typical oil change. You're in and out really quick. Average time is about. Twelve minutes. There's three bays. And again, I think the key here is no one uh leaves their vehicles. The facility is, you know, overall a smaller building, seventeen hundred and forty-five square feet. Um like I said, three bays. Um. You know, I know it was kinda mentioned during the peak hours, you know, from a traffic perspective. Again, we will have to kinda go through this with DOT. This is a low traffic generator. I mean, the peak hour during the week, sixteen to seventeen trips. At seven to eight cars on a weekend, fourteen trips, seven vehicles. This is not a high traffic generator. It's a really good site. You know, it's a really good use for this site because of the challenges, because of the grade change. You know, it's really difficult to access the site. You know, you you really can't come from Malcolm Street, you know, based on kind of the retaining wall. You know, where you can connect from minerals Mineral Springs becomes challenging because we have to kinda take into account sightlines. So having kind of a smaller use, a smaller traffic generating use, um you know, fits really well on this site. I think one of the other really nice parts about this site is, you know, the amount of open space that we have here. So, you know, we can. You know, someone could come in and they could build a parking lot, you know, up to five feet along Mineral Springs. They could build a the parking lot up to five feet on Malcolm Street. Uh they could go ten feet on Merrimack Street to the south. They could go ten feet. Um to the residence to the left. And and here we've kind of created a lot of open space. And that really is due to the grade change. You know, we need room to be able to kinda grade the site to kinda create a safe and flat level site. Um for the project. So you see a lot more open space um with this project as. As you see with other projects kind of along this corridor. Uh the the two areas of relief, um the waiver requests that were submitted, so parking eighteen spaces required, six are proposed. Uh people don't leave their leave their vehicles. So the ordinance kinda contemplates an auto service center where you. You go, you drop off your car, you get out of your car, um and you go wait into an area where they store cars overnight. Usually that's why we see. Um you know, around that eighteen vehicle mark. This is a quick loop. It's an average time of twelve minutes. People don't get out of their car. The only parking on site is needed for employees. Six spaces is more than enough for their operation. Um we've kinda shown on the plan how, you know, cars would kind of line up at the bays and kind of wait. Uh wait to go in, you know, during their peak time, they see about eight vehicles during that peak time. So there's plenty of room on site. This is not gonna back up on Mineral Spring. Uh and that's also something that DOT does review. You know, they wanna ensure that the the operation will will work effectively. Um and by kind of the because of the, you know, the uniqueness uniqueness of the site. You know, there's we don't feel it's a good idea to add more parking. Why add more impervious? Why? Why increase stormwater when we don't need to? Why add more pavement if we don't need it and have a the heat island effect? So we think kinda minimizing the parking, you know, is a good fit and kinda moving in the right direction. Um the other item we have is loading, so a twelve-foot by sixty-foot loading space is required. Uh that's a WV fifty or a tractor trailer. This site has small box trucks. Two times a week, they have either a small box truck. Kinda think of the size of either an Amazon van, a UPS truck, you know, maybe an SU thirty, SU twenty. Um they can easily kinda pull into the site. Um we we did submit truck turns um as well. They can kind of do a kind of K-turn at the back of the site and leave safely. All kind of deliveries are scheduled. Uh they're done during off-peak times, um and they can be controlled by um the operator. So. Um it kind of allows for a simple operation and again avoids kind of the need to add additional impervious area. Um on the project. A couple other kinda highlights. Uh twenty-eight trees being proposed as part of the pro- project today. The site's been clear-cut. Um almost a hundred plants, ninety-five new plants are proposed as part of the project. So kind of looking to kind of increase the landscaping on site as well. I can I'm definitely happy to go into, you know, operational side a little bit further. Um and again, we we did receive DEM comments today, really minor in nature, asking for a few. You know, additional details and things like that. And the DEM permit is just related to um because. Well, how we analyzed the site was kinda before it was demoed. Um and so this is not considered a redevelopment. It's considered a new development under DEM's regulations. So in order to meet stormwater and ensure we're not kinda sheet-flowing water uncontrolled uh to neighboring properties, we are doing an underground stormwater system. So. By, you know, anytime you infiltrate any parking areas, you have to go to DEM or a stormwater permit and water quality certification. Um again, I'm happy to answer any questions and go into more details, but uh we're excited to be here. I think, you know, we know that the owner may have. Talked about this project at a previous date. This is, you know, we're kinda here with a different team, but I think the same intention here is to. To bring a really good operator and a really good project to an underutilized property in the town.
Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes.
All right. Um first off, I do remember when this project was first brought to the uh to the board. And um it it was lacking in in information, specifically uh requesting a uh. Master and preliminary planning um approvals for a unified um review. I do want to acknowledge the fact that. In this submission, there is a an extreme amount of information and it was um provided to the board. In what I believe a timely manner in order for us to review. Me specifically, I'm just speaking for myself to review and be prepared for this meeting unlike the previous applicant. So thank you very much for that. Um I do have a couple of questions related to um the the parking and how parking is gonna be controlled. On site for employees only and a person who's never been to this facility before, how will they know? Um that parking is not available for them and they should be staying in their car and navigate through the site?
It's a great question. So there are some other con- concepts similar to it, but we do understand, right? People are new to it. So as part of. You know, the the building almost in some ways acts as directional as well. Um so there are signs. Um there's one sign on the front of the building that faces Mineral Springs. Um that says they have a kind of stay in your car sign, so kinda the front of the building has that. Um and then as you kind of, there are directional signs kind of around, kinda pointing to the entrance, like how to get to the facility. And then the um sign along the back of the building, which kinda faces where you would pull up to the bay, also kinda says oil change, stay in your car. Um to help kinda ensure people do so.
Okay, how about um assigned, how about signage assigned for the the parking spaces themselves? Will there be any signage indicating that? That the parking is for employees only, no public parking? I understand the signage um. Uh design intent to keep people in their cars, um but what will prohibit them from trying to park?
Yeah, they they don't have an employee-only parking signs. I don't think, you know, that would be a a big ask from the applicant if it's something the board would wanna see. Um you know, we do, we do see in kind of their other operations, you know, people really kind of. Quickly follow in line. There's there's people, employees, working in the bays that will help guide people. So I know it it's not a a problem they face, but if it makes the board feel more comfortable. You know, having a couple of those signs.
But Mr. Chairman, I can add a little more light to that. As I indicated at the onset, um. Uh one of the employees technician will will ultimately be on site and the purpose of that technician is to do the so-called intake. And so they'll be directional. They'll they'll inform the customer to essentially stay in their stay in their car. Will direct them into the appropriate lane. If someone needs to park for whatever reason, I'm sure that they'll coordinate that, but. That's normally unusual that someone comes in and parks because there's no reason to park. There's no reason to stay. There's it's not a retail facility. They're not buying anything. They're just going in for a service. And so that technician's one of the responsibilities essentially to coordinate the queuing. Coordinate the the flow and ensuring that there's a seamless activity at the site.
Sure, I know before you stated that um this is the second um. Proposal in in Rhode Island.
Right.
Um are there are there other facilities in New England or colder weather climates that are conducive to technicians staying outside for a very long time?
So there there are sites in uh New Jersey, there are sites in Pennsylvania. Um hold on, do my cheek.
Okay.
So they're 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 in New Jersey, they're in Pennsylvania, they're in New York, um North Carolina, which is a little warmer here. But certainly, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and New York have similar climates as we do and similar attitudes too, I should add. Which is, you know, we'll do whatever we wanna do type of type of mentality, but but we they have a good way of of in ensuring that everything remains seamless.
Thank you. Can you tell us a little bit about the stormwater management system um and how it? Will perform and specifically um what the the structure. Um facing Merrimack Street is and how that will perform as well?
Yeah, no problem. So um there is a it's an underground stormwater management facility, so we're capturing the parking area on the roof. Um we're gonna pre-treat it through hoods and sumps uh with the catch basins. And there's that isolator row that kinda helps pull out any suspended solids. Um and then that system kinda captures the water and kind of slowly infiltrates it in the ground. The um the it's considered kind of a riprap or a scour hole that's shown in the left-hand column, so as water kinda slowly leaves the system. Um it fills up the scour hole and kinda bubbles um down along that landscape area along the frontage of the site. So today, um water pretty much flows uncontrolled and it's all concentrated in that bottom right-hand corner. Where Merrimack and Malcolm Street meet. Um so you know, what we wanna look to do is ensure that we're capturing it. Infiltrating some of it in the ground and then slowly releasing the rest of it. So we're reducing both kinda peak runoff as well as volumes on site.
Okay, so there will be some water that runs off the site through the um through the riprap discharge?
Correct.
Okay, um the curbing that's around the the um paved areas, is that all um? Is that curbing that has a reveal and creates somewhat of a of a boundary around the the parking area or is any of that curbing flush that will allow sheet flow to? Um I'm sorry, that allows that will allow water to sheet flow off of the the. Um the pavement onto the grass area?
So it's all, you know, full height, six-inch reveal curbing, so all the pavement area will be kinda sent to the stormwater system. Um and then what we did look to do is kind of ensure that even the open space areas, we're not sending any water kinda to any neighbors directly. Um and what we don't wanna, what we also wanna ensure is that no water is. Blowing over one of these retaining walls. So we've kinda graded the site to kinda help move water safely around it. You know, today, some of that water. You know, if you were walking along Malcolm Street, I mean, during a rainstorm, you're probably seeing a little mini um, you know, fountain happening.
Um can you share any com- any of the comments that DEM had regarding the um? Uh the underground stormwaters system actually discharging day and like daylighting out onto the mouth?
None of their comments were related to the, you know, kinda type of system or kind of how we, you know, meeting the requirements. Um. One of the, you know, one of the comments that I do remember was, you know, kind of designing, kind of, we have kind of some swales around the outer edge, was looking at doing like a check dam to help slow water down further. Um they asked for kinda some clarifications on um. On a few kind of additional calculations, uh but nothing was kind of, there was no kinda concerns with the overall design or intent.
Okay, thank you for that. Um. Does the board have any questions related to the I I kinda took control there, but does the board have any other questions related to the um the parking variance or the the stormwater management?
Yes, uh the retaining wall that you are proposing on the site, um what's the height of it and would it? Uh cause any uh site distance issues for vehicles uh. Uh exiting uh Malcolm Street onto Middle Spring Avenue or even vehicles exiting the site?
So the the retaining wall around the perimeter is is all existing. We're not proposing any kinda new retaining walls on the perimeter. Um we do have kind of a small kinda drop in grade on the other side of the fence by the trash enclosure, but there's no proposed retaining walls as part of the project. Those exist today. Um and that's something we have kinda shown on the plan for DOT, but we have shown the sightlines as well at the driveway.
Thank you. To add on to Lou's question about the retaining wall, sorry, Warren, um there there is an existing stair cut into one of those retaining walls um off of Malcolm Street. Um is there any improvement or um scope related to those stairs as part of the project?
So initially, we were we were intending to kinda leave them there. Um it it's it's always interesting. On paper, it seems like this. On paper, it seems like this large staircase or significant height. It's really like eighteen inches when you're out there. So we were intending to leave it. Um, you know, we're working, um, you know, our understanding is the utilities are stubbed there today. Um, so we may not even have to go into Malcolm Street to make the connection. Um, but if we did have to, it's, I mean, the, the retaining walls in that area is only about twelve to eighteen inches. They would just kind of repair it in place.
Is there any appetite to um, remove the, the stairs? Because you are promoting a, a business where um, the clients stay in their car. Um, it's a, I would, I would say it's a non-pedestrian business and stairs entering the site off of Malcolm Street definitely invites pedestrians onto your property?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, it's, it's not something I know, you know, our team looking at it, we had a, a heavy concern with. It's a pretty minor area. I mean, if we, the board wanted to see us kind of just remove that little section, um, again, you know, we don't, wouldn't have an objection with that.
Is it, is it feasible? Is that a fair enough question to remove the stairs?
It's something I think we could, you know, maybe if, if it is feasible without compromising the wall. Um, you know, that would be something we could look at. I think my, our only concern would be if there's, you know, depending on kind of rebar, kind of interconnections. Um, but another option would be we could put, you know, some type of barrier, like a little piece of fence. I don't know if the, might not be the look we go for, but I think if it's feasible, we could kind of at least remove the steps and infill those.
Warren, I'm sorry I interrupted you. You had a comment, questions?
Pardon my question.
Oh.
Going back to Malcolm Street, with the plans that I am seeing, it looks like the retaining wall is on the street property, not on your property. Is that true?
Correct, yes.
Okay. What is the height of that wall um, between Malcolm Street and the finished grade on the top of the wall?
All right, let's see, we're diving in. Um, is there any, is there any specific, so it does change. That's the, while we, while we go along Malcolm Street.
Malcolm i- it slopes downward towards Middle Spring Avenue, if I remember correctly.
It's higher, yeah, higher.
That's a granite wall, a granite rubble wall. And is that three, four, five, six feet high uh, at, at Middle Spring Avenue?
So at the, the tallest point is at the corner of Middle Mineral Spring and Malcolm. Um, you're correct. I mean, it's about about um, maybe four or five feet at that highest point. And then it kind of tapers off as you go south down Malcolm Street and it tapers off as you go west, kind of up Mineral Spring.
Think we have or should have a requirement for fencing there or solid arborvitae or uh, just so that people wouldn't be tempted to jump the wall?
So the, I mean, the pedestrian path is on the low side. So the, you know, the high side would be kind of on the property. So I don't, you know, we don't have to worry about like a public, a public safety issue. Um, you know, there's no um,
Unless they take the stairs.
Yes, yes, the stairs which, which will be removed. But there's really no kind of pedestrian paths around the building. People aren't getting onto their cars. You can't walk up to this building and render any type of service. So only people out of their cars here are, are the employees.
Okay. And the other thing I've tried to do over the years is uh, restrict signage that people from the street would probably never see. And I'm looking at the driveway side of this here. The next door neighbor is a uh, A-frame building right at the sidewalk up front. So coming down the hill, you would never see that signage. Uh, and I, I wouldn't, I, I would kind of ask that uh, the signage on that side of the building may be removed.
So one of the um, one of the changes, and it is, it was reflected on the, the plan that I, I have up here tonight is uh, for the prototypical elevation, that the prototypical sign package that we were given by the vendor showed the signs on this side. Those signs were meant to be on this side of the building.
Signs on that side, I see no problem.
So they, yeah, I think you, you were thinking exactly how the applicant was thinking where those signs on that side, on the left-hand side would not have been effective. They were meant to be on the right-hand side. So that, that does reflect that.
Warren, do you have any more uh, questions at this time for the applicant?
Uh, one other question, I, I'm looking at this here and I hate to see more pavement, but I'm seeing a lot of um, I'm seeing a lot of grass and evergreens that have to be uh, maintained. Um, is this a highly manicured thing, or is this something that's typical, the grass here is, do you, does the franchise require that they, they
Yeah, this, the, the sites will be professionally maintained. So they want to ensure a, a high-end finish.
Okay.
From a maintenance, just, just to follow up on Warren's question, just rel- related to maintenance from a um, on the landscaping, from a maintenance perspective, the, the slopes and, or grading that are proposed, can they um, uh, accommodate the proper equipment to maintain the, the grass?
They can. So I know, uh, you know, on the grading plan, there's a lot of lines, but in reality, they're, you know, two to three, two to three to one slopes, which are pretty standard.
Yep.
Um, across the industry.
Okay. Steve, any questions?
Uh, yes. Can you talk a little bit more about operations and can you let us know the hours of operation?
Um, so seven AM to eight PM, seven days a week. Then anything specific on the, on the operations side?
No, just in general.
Give it a run through again. So again, seven days a week, seven AM to eight PM. Um, about four to five employees are expected on a peak shift. Um, you know, again, maybe, maybe six, but that's why we have the six parking spaces. Uh, passenger vehicles only, no, you know, that includes vans, but this is not a fleet service. So you can't bring a box truck here to get your oil changed. It's really meant for, for the general public. Um, deliveries only twice a week, largest trucks, a box truck. No tractor trailers. They're usually smaller, a lot of like vans and things like that. The facility has control over all delivery times. So they kind of set when they come, they're done during off-peak times. Um, and I think it was mentioned earlier, the peak that they see is about eight cars. Those hours are eleven AM to two PM during the week or four to six PM and then weekends, one to four PM. But um, from the traffic engineering side, it's, you know, a really low, low traffic generator.
Removal of the oil?
Yeah, so they um, everything is um, contained onsite. So it's all, uh, Mr. Mancini mentioned it, nothing's underground. It's all above ground. And then they sit in containment areas. So it's kind of a concrete curved containment system um, to ensure no, you know, no potential spills like that.
No, no drain within that concrete curb?
There's no, there's no floor drains at all onsite. Everything is completely contained. So there's no way that kind of oil can exit the facility.
Right. So oil stay in the barrels and the barrels stay within a um, a con- a recessed concrete pad that has a curb around it and there's no drain in there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, and then um, they, a hundred percent of the used oil and oil filters are reclaimed and recycled. Uh, they use OSHA certified used oil recycling companies, so professionals to kind of manage any, any waste. Um, and then as noted, you know, nu- new oil is also stored kind of in separate containment systems and then within an actual above ground and then in a containment bay.
Um, did you, did you ask, I'm sorry. No, I was just wondering if you asked um, what the, the frequency of um, oil pickup and oil delivery is?
Just for the record, one to two times a week.
Thank you.
I have one other question. I, I remember when we were talking about this a year ago or whatever. Uh, there, we were talking about the used oil capacity and that that was regulated by D E M. Could you, do you know what that capacity is, what that maximum is, just for the board's knowledge?
So I, I, for this facility, I, I couldn't give you that exact number. You know, they'll have to comply with all D E M requirements. You know, I, I do know, um, you know, they tend, they have, you know, just from kind of some of their, their background. Um, you know, they have almost two and a half to three times the amount of containment compared to what they're storing at the facility.
Okay, but I just was wondering what the state.
Yeah, that oils, my area, civil traffic, kind of making these beautiful projects come to life is more my focus.
Okay. Since you brought up traffic, um, I'm just reading through the staff report and it states, sorry, my computer's frozen. Um, item N says the applicant received a recertification of a traffic study, which accounts for the change in proposed use of the property. Memo dated July twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, written by Par Corporation states, Par Corporation is of the opinion that this new proposed development will not have any significant impact on the capacity and safety of the surrounding roadwork, roadway network. Um, is, is anybody from Par here tonight that can speak to that traffic study?
No one's from Par here tonight, but I, I did review kind of the study that they're prepared. So um, some of the references I made are, are in it. Um, our office, you know, does traffic engineering for this, this user as well as many users throughout the state. So um, we're very comfortable to talk about it, but in their conclusion, we agree there would, there would be no impact.
And has that report, that recertif- that recertified report been submitted to the town planner for the record?
Believe it was, yes.
It was? Okay. It's just not in our email packet.
Yeah, we have, I haven't seen the staff report. Um, but I'm happy to speak. If there are any comments in there, I'm happy to address them.
Okay. Um, so staying with traffic, but just being really logical. Um, you mentioned you have about eight cars at peak time?
That's about, on average, they say that's about, you know, what the peak that they would see.
Okay.
Three in the bay, three outside of six. And then we've shown on the plan, um, you know, an additional two, four, five. Um, and there's plenty, you could probably fit another, you know, five to eight cars before you even get close to the road.
Okay. So what, if you have three cars in your, in the facility, can you give us what the estimated um, number of cars that can queue in the site is?
So we, we showed just kind of running a single lane queuing, um, which they in theory could do double, but um, you know, three, six, nine, twelve, probably fifteen with only doing a single lane of queuing. Um, if you did a double lane, you could probably get another, you know, five to seven cars.
But it's about, I, I see it now. So it's about, wait, one, two, three. It's a, it's about eight to the um, bottom left-hand corner of the, yeah.
Yep. And then again, this drive aisle, I think that's one of the nice, you know, parts about this layout. Um, is kind of having those bays behind. It gives us a really nice circulation. We don't have, you know, sometimes you see like the drive-through lane starts right when you get into a site. And that always makes us nervous as traffic engineers. This is a case where you're really, you know, you have kind of a nice line um, to kind of get to the bays.
How about, how about leaving the site now? Cause um, I don't know if you've had the pleasure of driving on Middle Spring Avenue. Um, it's not very pleasurable. Um, but how about leaving the site? Um, do you know how many cars could actually queue to leave the site? And so that's one question. And then the second question is, um, your, your outbound lane going on to Mineral Spring Avenue. Um, is that uh, a right-hand turn only or is that left? Is, are you restricting the direction of that outbound lane?
Um, so there's no restrictions. There is a kind of a two-way turn lane there. I have, you know, personally been to the site. I've driven the road many times. So um, you know, Mineral Springs, we understand. I mean, it has its challenges, right? I, but you know, that's where having a use like this, I think is strategic for this type of property. You know, there's permitted uses in the zone that could generate a lot more traffic, you know, at this location. Um, so we think that's, you know, one of the reasons it's such a good fit. Um, but you, there's no restrictions. You can make the left or the right. You know, when we, when we start talking about, you know, during the weekday peak hour, you know, in, in Par's report, they talked about, um, I believe the number was, um, the highest number in their report was seventeen trips. Um, so we're really looking at, let's say, eight to nine cars. Um, you know, over, over sixty minutes, you're talking about, you know, one car every six to seven minutes. So there's really not going to be a queue or it's not a Chick-fil-A, it's not a Starbucks. I mean, it's a low, low traffic.
And what's the number of cars that could, that the site could potentially accommodate queuing to leave the property?
Yes. So I mean, kind of approximating it, you know, I would say you could probably fit one outside of each door. So that's three, you know, four, um, at least five, kind of just looking at the plan.
Okay. Um, gentleman with his hand up. Do you mind coming up to the microphone and stating your name and um,
My name is Des Roberts. I'm, I'm one of the owners of the franchise group, um, EB Partners, Quikloop with the Carolinas, uh, and I'm a board member. Um, one important point I wanted to add as it relates to um, outgoing traffic. We're going to have a technician from the minute that they come in, direct them into queue, offer them a bottle of water. And then, you know, set each customer in queue. When they're leaving, we will have a technician direct them out of queue as well. And we will not release cars out of the bays until we've got, you know, the exit cleared. We're not going to let a bunch of cars stack up like that, if that makes sense.
That does make sense.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
It's all good. No, thank you.
Make sure that, um, just, we were not going to have a bunch of people, you know, stacking up without being controlled.
Thank you very much. Um, regarding the, I'm sorry, uh, regarding the um, the variance for the, the loading zone, I know you indicated that the, the required loading zone is above and beyond uh, what this operation um, requires, meaning the, the space, is that correct?
It's not only the size, just the, the need for it. You know, the, I mean, it's a seventeen hundred square foot building. Um, two deliveries a week. I mean, and, you know, to accommodate a completely separate, you know, area only reserved for loading uh, would, you know, provide a lot of unnecessary impervious surfaces.
But you do have um, smaller sized vehicles or equipment um, del- delivering to the, to the site, correct?
Correct. Which, which makes, you know, makes them able to kind of maneuver easily kind of through the site, um, and not impede any, any traffic.
Right. Would the, the applicant be amenable to submitting a um, a cut sheet on what type of delivery trucks are, will frequent the site most likely? Just for the record?
Yeah, we, we did submit a truck to, I believe to Brent, an SU thirty, um, which would be the largest vehicle. If, if it didn't make its way, we can always, we can, as a condition, we would just resend it. It's no big deal. We have it ready to go.
Thank you. And the business hours, again, what time do you guys close?
At eight PM.
Eight PM. Um, so in the, in the winter time, um, obviously the, the sun sets a lot earlier, right? Maybe four thirty at the, at the earliest. So um, what's the applicant's um, approach to sort of managing um, uh, headlights um, from the property beaming into the surrounding residential neighborhood, specifically uh, along Merrimack Street and possibly even, even Malcolm Street. I know you have a row of arborvitae's there. However, I'm with the grade change, I'm not one hundred percent confident or sure that those arborvitae's would, would block headlights that are up at the, the parking. Oh, I'm sorry, at least at the um, the, the elevation in which the vehicles will, will drive in.
Yeah, no. You know, the, I totally understand where you're coming from. Yeah, and over time, the arborvitae's will grow up and definitely provide that screen. On the, the west side or left-hand side, I know the resident has a, has kind of a solid fence along his property line, um, that he just recently replaced. I mean, something we could look to do is, is, you know, even shift that row of arborvitae's up the hill. Um, you know, kind of to provide some better kind of screening day one. Um, and depending on the location of the stormwater basin, if we can't fully achieve that, we could always look at kind of going with like a more traditional boxwood. You know, headlight screen, maybe in some tr- strategic areas where the cars kind of make that turn.
Yeah. So if you go higher, your, your planting can be lower. First, i- if you go higher with, meaning if you plant your vegetation higher in elevation, closer to where the, the cars are, that plant Vegetation higher in elevation, closer to where the, the cars are, that plant doesn't have to be necessarily as tall, but if you. Want to do plantings at the bottom of the hill, you'd have to have a tall plant in order to block those headlights, I, I think it's a, um. It would be a very neighborly thing to do, um, to, you know, revise the landscaping plan to, um. Help ensure, um, headlights are, are blocked from the, the neighborhood. Definitely.
On the, uh. Parking spaces, uh, you're proposing six parking spaces and four or five employees. Would you anticipate the need for some visitor parking, like a, a district, a district manager coming to the site to inspect or? Uh, a delivery service of food to the employees, you know? Are you going to be able to accommodate any kind of visitor parking?
Yeah, they, they, they don't anticipate needing any more than six spaces, um, you know, they, they don't even plan to kind of use all six spaces. Um, you know, again, it, people can't get out of their cars, cars, things like.
No, I understand, they don't get out of the car, I'm, I'm, I'm referring to unexpected visitors that, that could come to the site, that would. Have to have a, a parking spot.
Everything, everything would be planned, so any type of inspection like that would be planned, they'd ensure they have parking, some of the employees, I think, you know. You know, not always, you know, drive, there's people that either get dropped off, might use kind of ride share services, but. We're very comfortable with six spaces, uh, we feel that's more than, more than adequate to serve the use.
Thank you. Uh, reading through the staff's comments, um. It says, uh, project received water availability letter from Providence Water dated May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. A sewer availability letter from Narragansett Bay Commission dated May twenty-ninth, uh, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, tho- those letters aren't submitted or not included in the, in the packet, however, the staff did make comment on it. Um, can you verify that is correct?
That is correct, yep, they confirmed water and sewers available.
Item D in the staff comments, uh, says the drainage plan shows a large underground stormwater recharge system in the rear of the property to catch. All roof and parking lot runoff with an overflow to a scour hole in the rear of the property, this system was certified by. And then it's, it's blank in our, um, in our report, so the, the staff may not have. Um, it, it looks like the staff accidentally omitted who that, who certified that system.
So our, our office prepared the plans and the report, they're both stamped, uh, by myself, and then DM. They're kind of, kind of in the process of being permitted by DM.
Okay, thank you. Uh, also in the staff report, I'm sorry, um. So you don't have a copy of the staff report?
We work well on the fly, though, I'm happy to take a peek at it.
Yeah, we're gonna give you that right now, because this is a. Want to make sure you guys are aware of another variance that. Looks like you need to seek, other, in addition to the off-street parking mode spacing, thank you. So, on page two. Item L.
This, we have not talked about this with, um, town staff. Um, I know in our initial calculation that was submitted, uh, we, we reviewed and kind of confirmed that per each frontage. Um, the signage, you know, is permissible, we have kind of the, the total frontage, um, for each side. Um, I think what we, you know, what we could do.
What we can do, uh, what we would propose, it, uh, is for us to revisit the signage, and if we need to relieve, we can return for the relief. Uh, and we could modify the relief such that under the new state statute, we may, uh, fall into that fifteen percent modification regarding the. Square footage, because it looks like we're deficient by forty-three square feet, so if we can't make up the forty-three square feet, we can come close to it. Our obligation is to, uh, seek the least relief necessary anyhow, so, yeah, we can do that for final.
Okay, alright, so, um, what, what I, I just want to repeat what I heard, so right now, the. The applicant is not asking, um, for the board to review the, uh, proposed signage in that. And the applicant is not requesting the board to make a decision on the proposed signage in order to, um. Either request relief or to approve it, so you are omitting the signage from the proposal, thank you.
In, in this way, we don't have to, you know, re-advertise it to any of that.
I think that's a great idea, thank you. Do you have anything else to add to your presentation?
I do, if I can just ask two simple questions of Josh, uh, related to the variances we are seeking, which is the variance for parking. And the variance for loading, uh, Josh, can you just confirm for the board that the relief we're seeking is the least relief? Necessary, and secondly, that if the variances were not to be granted, that it would amount to more than a mere inconvenience for the project and for the design of the project?
Um, yes, that is the case.
And, and as you've previously testified, you're comfortable and confident that the spaces which we will be providing would be necessary to accommodate the use and. Uh, be consistent with that use at this site, particularly this location.
Uh, yes, it would be, thank you.
At this point, we have nothing further.
Thank you.
Answer any questions the public may have.
Sure, um, I was gonna bring it back to the board one more time, do you guys have any other questions for the applicant while they're standing at the podium? No, okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
And, and thank you for a copy of the staff report.
Yeah, you're welcome. Uh, we'll open up the meeting to, um, hear comments from the public, if anybody from the public is here to, uh, comment on the. Um, application that we are currently, uh, reviewing, you may do so now, the time is seven fifteen. Great, there is, uh, nobody left from the public here, so we'll. Close the time for public comment, and the time is seven fifteen. Uh, my fellow board members, uh, do we have any discussion that we would like to have related to this? Project, um, I do just want to, before, if we do, just want to kindly remember, remind everybody that, uh, the applicant. Is here for Unified Development Plan Review for Master Plan Review. Master Plan, you're here for preliminary as well, correct? Okay, so applicant for a unified, I'm just reading this from the agenda, applicant for Unified. Development Plan Review for Master Plan Review to construct the Take Five Auto Repair Oil Change Facility with request for a twelve. Space parking variance under section seven ten, minimum off-street parking requirements. As well as loading space variance under section seven thirteen, loading space requirements and dimensions. This application also has a request to combine master plan and preliminary plan stages for review, so, um. The, the board, my, my, uh, understanding is that the, um, we are combining master and preliminary. Um, reviews of, for the project and that the relief requested. For parking spaces and for the loading space requirements, um, is subject to our decision. Uh, the applicant does not have to go to the zoning board, do I have that correct? Okay. Okay. Any discussion? Another reminder is that the applicant has withdrawn the, um. The signage portion of the project from tonight's review, so we will not be, uh, reviewing or discussing, commenting. Or making a decision on any of the, any of the signage. I will say, except the applicant's testimony that there is signage included in, in the design. That, um, navigates cars through the site. Where the. Customers are to stay in there, to remind the customers to stay in their car, and also the applicant has. Seem to agree that signage being posted at parking spaces for him. That indicates for employees only will be implemented into the project, is that, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Um, furthermore, the applicant has also agreed to, um. Warren, you brought up a good point, if that retaining wall is not on their property, I don't know what they do with that, with those stairs. What do we do with those stairs gone? Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Is there, are there stairs on Merrimack? There are stairs on Merrimack?
No, but it looks like the, uh. Ten feet from the property.
Yes, uh, i- if I may, Mr. Chairman, through the chair, so there, there are some stairs on Malcolm Street. Looks like there's probably a former house there, because they're, they're small residential stairs. And as long as DPW permits it, we don't have a problem in removing that and kind of, kind of closing that off, uh, because it's not on our side. They, they, they look like.
Yeah, sure, with the coordination and, and, um, review and approval with the DPW.
DPW, correct, yeah. Yeah, so as long as there's no objection from DPW, um, we can work, uh, collaboratively with them. Because they, they're, they look like they're remnants of a residential dwelling.
Thank you. Thank you. The applicant has also, um. Is amenable to, um, strategically locate, locating, excuse me, um, appropriately sized plantings to. Um, help minimize, if not, um, remove any sort of, uh, light pollution. Um, generated by, uh, headlights, um, from the site into the neighboring, um, properties. And the applicant has also agreed to submit for. Cut sheets on the small-scale van or box truck deliveries, however, in your presentation, you noted that.
We, we, I believe we've already submitted them to the planner, but we'll, we'll do that as part of final.
So as the applicant has presented tonight and, um, during discussion with the applicant, they have, um. I think cooperated with our questions and, and requests, um, in. Uh, in, in improving the, um, property for our town and community. Do I hear a motion?
So, so if I may, through the chair, what, what we would respectfully request is essentially three motions, three votes, one to. Combine the master plan with preliminary plan, and the second for the approval of the master plan, preliminary plan. For final to be done administrative, subject to your conditions, and then a third vote separately for the variances.
That's correct, thank you.
Do you, just one clarification, uh, the fact that that existing retaining wall appears to be on town property. Should there be an agreement between the property owner and the town to allow that to remain on town property? Either.
It sounds like the applicant's willing to coordinate with DPW to do so, so if the board wants to make. Make that motion contingent on some, on some plans with DPW, I think that would be sufficient, I think. The work being done is pretty minor, so I don't foresee an issue with that.
Okay, it's just they are using town property for their. Their, their site.
It doesn't sound like, my question is that they're not using town property on their site, this is, they're budding some town property. And I think they're making an improvement to town property with the permission of the town, so.
As long as they get permission.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Just, just so I'm, just so it's clear for the record, so we're not using any town property, and we, it's not our intention to incorporate any town property. As part of our site, it just happens that, um, there is something on town property that may affect our property, so as a result. Specifically regarding those stairs on Malcolm Street, we're amenable to coordinating with DPW to, to find a resolution to close those out or to eliminate them. But we will certainly won't do anything without first collaborating with the town, and there's, there's a, there is a condition I, that I did see in your staff report. Says that we're not to do any type of construction until we get all our permits in place, and we'll coordinate with DPW when we do and when we're ready for construction.
Yeah, it's just the issue, uh, if it ever has to be repaired, whose responsibility will it be to repair the town? Or will it be the, uh, the property owner that is using?
So, so, so it would be the town, because not on our prop, it's not our property, it's not being used by us. Um, it's, it's outside of our parameters, um, but we'll coordinate on, as part of this, we'll coordinate on kind of. Closing those, you know, those issues out, so that way they're, minimizes whatever town maintenance responsibilities or. Continued, uh, uh, issues can arise from it.
Okay, yeah, okay, right, so, um, thank you for reminding me that we actually have, uh, three motions to, um, entertain. So, uh, the, the applicant is seeking a combined, um. To combine master plan and preliminary plan, um, staff report does not object to, uh, any of the information or lack thereof. Information, um, that would, uh, restrict the, um, board from. Um, or advising the board to restrict, um, reviewing this project. Um, concurrently, master and preliminary. So, the, do I hear a motion to combine a master planning and preliminary planning? For this project?
Uh, so moved.
Okay, Steve made the motion, the motion is on the table for a second.
Second.
Blue seconds, uh, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, so, um, motion passes four to zero, um, that we will. Uh, review this project under, uh, master and preliminary, um, plan stages, thank you.
What do you expect the, um, lead time to be before construction and opening?
So, so we're hopeful that within the next thirty days, we can get our final plan in for administrative final plan approval. And once we have that, then we'll proceed on, on, uh, you know, getting our construction team lined up and proceeding, probably should. If all goes well, probably within ninety days to start construction. Yeah, yeah, as I, as I said at the beginning, we, we, we're, we're, you know, Johnson was the first to approve one, and we think that North Providence could be the first opening. So we're, we're ready to move that quickly.
Yeah. Thank you, Warren, good question, um, okay, so the second, uh, vote tonight is. Um, now that we are reviewing the project under, uh, master and preliminary, uh, approvals, um. Given the, uh, discussion with the, I'm gonna go over everything that I said about five minutes ago, given the discussion with the applicant. Um, and the board, uh, the applicant has, um. Agreed to. Um, so the applicant has agreed to, uh, sorry, remove the, um. Signage portion of the project from, from the design and submit at a later date, with the exception of the signage that is. Um, necessary for customers to know the. Um, necessary for customers to know to stay in their car. And for the signage that is necessary for customers to understand that, um, there is no customer parking on site. That the applicant has agreed to coordinate and work with uh DPW if it's permissible. To um remove the existing stairs on Malcolm Street. Um, for abetment of the project and for the town and um re- replace with either retaining wall. Or some sort of barrier to prevent pedestrians from entering the site via the stairs. The applicant has also agreed to um rework the landscape plan um to strategically locate. The um appropriate size and location of plants that will prohibit um light pollution resulting from. Um, headlights of the cars that are on the site. And if there is no. If the town planner does not have record of um the. Vehicle um traffic pattern related to the um delivery trucks or vans that will be making the deliveries. Um, the applicant has agreed to uh provide that and also a cut sheet um of the um typical. Vehicles that would be used for deliveries to the town planner. Do I hear a motion in favor of? The applicant as presented with the um conditions agreed to during the meeting?
So moved.
Steve made the motion, the motion is on the table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Blue seconds, uh, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion has passed four to zero. And last but not least, Unified Development, we get to beat the zoning board tonight, um, so. Oh, sorry, I thought you.
No, 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 go ahead now.
So the applicant has. Requested relief. On uh requested relief for our twelve parking spaces um under. Which were would would be required under section seven ten minimum off-street parking requirement, and the applicant has. Do you guys want to combine these, or do you want to um, you know, we'll prove them one at a time. Um, so the app, so one variance is for um. Twelve off-street parking spaces under section seven ten minimum off-street parking requirements. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the relief?
So moved.
Steve made the motion, the motion is on the table. Do I have a second? Warren, seconds, um. All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes four to zero. Um, last vote of for this applicant, um applicant is seeking seeking relief. Um, for a loading space um under section seven thirteen load, loading space requirements and dimensions. Uh, do I hear a motion to in favor of this uh relief?
So moved.
Steve makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Blue seconds, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? I'm hearing none, the motion is passed.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. I know I said it earlier today, earlier in the meeting, but uh thank you for providing us with all the information that you guys, that you guys have. Uh, you guys have come a long way since the last time we saw you and uh, and uh, thank you very much for, again, being prepared tonight. And allowing us to be prepared tonight. So um. Alright, so last on the agenda, um, we have a applicant is Connolly Law and Associates from. One twenty-three Dyer Street, Unit Three B, Providence, Rhode Island. The description is recommendation to the town council regarding a request for a zoning text amendment. Of section four oh nine E expansion of buildings or structures non-conforming by dimension to allow expansion. Of non-conformance for multifamily residential use with a special use permit. Is the applicant present? The applicant is not present, however, um Angelica, would you like to um inform the board of your discussions today?
I did have an opportunity to speak with attorney Dylan Conley, who is the applicant's attorney for this project. Um, based on our discussions and the fact that our planner was sick this evening um and unavailable to answer any staff. Comments or questions, um and because I did speak with the applicant, I do think it would be prudent to continue. This matter to the next hearing to allow the applicant to respond and and have some further discussions.
So the applicant was made aware that Brent wasn't here, um, and therefore elected not to come. Uh, assuming that we would continue, um, I I. I don't have any issues with continuing the the matter. Um, I don't feel comfortable making a vote on this tonight, one way or the other. Um, I don't know if anybody else um feels strongly about this in um. Uh, differently from I, if if so, I'm more than willing to listen, but if not, I'll kindly entertain a motion to continue. So I'll kindly entertain a motion to continue. Till the August, August meeting dated thirteenth. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to continue to August thirteenth.
Okay, Steve has made the motion to continue. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, Wa- Warren, seconds, uh, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? I'm hearing none, motion passes to continue to August thirteenth. Four to no, to nothing, um. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Steve makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Blue seconds, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? That concludes our uh meeting, the time is uh seven thirty-five P M.
Excellent work as usual. You're a great chair.
Uh, Frank, are you still on? If so, you can stop the recording and end the broadcast. Please.
Oh, no, I don't mind. I was fighting.